Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Glad to welcome you all to the Thursday, March 21st, 2024 special call meeting of the Portsmouth City School Board. We'd now ask you to stand for a brief moment of silence. Thank you. We're now belating a pledge of allegiance by Ms. Irene Boone.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God and indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Maybe see that.
Can I look? Is it tool? T U L?
Agenda item 2.4 will be the mission statement, Ms. Boone.
I lost it. I was just being nosy because I was like, oh, that looks good. Yeah.
The mission of the Portsmouth Public School Division is to engage all students in learning that will foster academic excellence and responsible citizenship.
Thank you. Agenda item 2.5, attendance, roll call, Madam Clerk.
Ms. Atkinson?
Here.
Mrs. Boone?
Here.
Dr. Cotton?
Present.
Mrs. Futrell?
Mrs. Hines?
Present.
Mrs. Schumay?
Here.
Mrs. Thomas?
Here.
Dr. Whitaker?
Here.
Dr. Patello?
Here.
Thank you so much.
Oh, eight members present. One member absent.
Thank you so much. And Ms. Futrell, she is away at a conference, that's why she's not present this evening. I now entertain a motion for the approval of the agenda for March 21st, 2024.
For approval, second.
Motion made by one of these three. Ms. Schumay?
Ms. Schumay.
And second, my Ms. Boone. Any discussion? Seeing none, roll call vote, Madam Clerk.
Ms. Atkinson?
Yes.
Mrs. Boone?
Yes.
Dr. Cotton?
Yes.
Mrs. Hines?
Yes.
Mrs. Schumay?
Yes.
Mrs. Thomas?
Yes.
Dr. Whitaker?
Yes.
Dr. Patello?
Yes.
It's unanimous.
Thank you so much. As advertised, this is the moment now for our public hearing for the proposed FY 2024-25 operating budget. And just as a reminder for school board members, this budget was prepared based on the governor's presented budget. There has been a House and Senate budget agreed upon and approved that has not been signed off on as of yet, but it will be a considerable difference between the two budgets. And just to give a little background information on that, if the House and Senate budget is signed into law by the governor, then that will increase our revenue by about 10 to 11, 10 and a half to 11 million dollars, which means our ass from city council will reduce from 15 billion to about four if that budget is signed off and approved. So as of right now, we have to approve a budget by law based on what we have present, and that's the governor's budget, and that's what's been presented by Dr. Brace and his team and his in-board docs for our approval. But at this time, if we do have any citizens who are here to make comments on the budget, you can use us at this time. Do you have any present? All right. Looks like we do not have any present. So now I will now entertain a motion from the board to approve the budget at this time.
For approval, second.
Motion made by Vice Chair Atkinson, second, by Ms. Boone. Any discussion? Ms. Thomas?
I do just want to make sure. So with the, once the governor signs the budget that maybe has a kind of big difference that was presented by the House and the Senate, we will come back and look at that, the adjustments to that budget.
Right. So once the new budget, if the new budget is signed and approved, we then come back, Mr. Falk, we're entering the difference in the revenue projections, then we'll have to approve that new budget based on revenue projections.
Yeah. Because right now, we, all we have is an estimate. We don't have the count two as of yet. So that's anticipated to come out this, probably sometime this weekend, is what they shared with us yesterday, Saturday or Monday.
Okay.
Sunday or Monday.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
So can you, can you repeat the adjustment again?
So based on the estimate that we have without having a count two, the Senate and House budget would give us an additional 10 and a half to 11 million dollars of revenue that we will get from the state compared to the governor's budget, which means we originally asked for 15 million from city council to cover our estimate of needs, but with that budget, it will reduce down to about four that we'll need additional from the city.
Well, I do have a comment question.
Okay.
Given that might be a scenario, if that were the scenario, is, is there a way we could increase the, the estimate that we have for raises? Because that's something that I think to, you know, to maintain the teachers that we do have, that would be something I think we should look at.
That's definitely, I mean, we can make any adjustments we want as a board. We can definitely discuss that if we would like Mr. Falk to come up with projections for different amounts, we can, we can do that as well, and he can bring those back to us based on what the budget number. Right now, I believe we're asking for a 7% increase. As of right now, I think that's the largest in the area right now is 7%, but I do understand what you're saying. But, but I want us to keep in mind also that we are still going to do the compression study, which is also going to be an additional ass to get us where we need to be as far as the steps are concerned. So I don't want the staff to think we're just trying to throw bonuses or raises at them. We are trying to get them on their right step as well for that. Yep.
Yeah, we'll take that into, yeah, we'll definitely look at that.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Anyone else? All right. We have a motion, a second, Madam Clerk.
Ms. Atkinson?
Yes.
Mrs. Boone?
Yes.
Dr. Cotton?
Yes.
Mrs. Hines?
Yes.
Mrs. Schumay?
Yes.
Mrs. Thomas?
Yes.
Dr. Whitaker?
Yes.
Dr. Patello?
Yes.
It's unanimous.
Thank you so much. Agenda item 4.1 is the agenda review for March 28th, 2024. It is in board docs. And of course, if you have any agenda items you would like to add, please let Dr. Brace tell myself, no. Agenda item 4.2 is subcommittee reports. Do we have any reports at this time?
Don't everybody jump up at once. I'll go. So we met Monday, Tuesday. This has been the longest week on the face of the planet, if y'all know, y'all know what I'm talking about. But CNI met Monday. We went through lots of events that are happening with spring kickoff, with SOL season that are starting. We went through Title I engagement nights, mat, for lack of a better term, because I really can't remember, the math bowl, the history bowl, the March Madness with the math and the elementary schools and that competition that's going to be this Saturday, if I'm not mistaken, at Manor High School. Thank you. And so the team, the, all the elementary schools are in a bracket. They all have work and packets that they've completed, and so they're going to go compete head to head against each other and work on those math skills and, you know, that SOL remediation piece and parent engagement. So that was one of the things that we discussed and that we stuck in, in my head. And then I have on my Royal Robotics t-shirt because our Royal Robotics competed and they have advanced to the next level of competition. So we've got two robotics teams here. We've got the Vex Robotics and we've got our Royal Robotics. So support them and give them good wishes on their next round. And then we also have, is it DECA or FBLA? DECA. DECA students and teams that are, that have moved and have advanced as well. So they're going on to their next level of competition. So things are looking up and up, and our kids are doing stuff, and our teachers and our staff are doing stuff to get our kids ready to show us what they know in, in May. So I'm excited, and it was, it was a very busy meeting, and unfortunately, I don't remember, you know, everything, but those are the ones that stuck out. So was there anything else I needed to discuss? It was all exciting. I mean, you can hear it in my voice, you know, so.
Absolutely.
Yeah, lots of SOL prep, but that's the nature of the beast right now.
All right. Thank you. Any other reports?
Thank you, Chair. So really quickly, there was a HR meeting, committee meeting, of course, and I got a little bit of information because I was in another meeting at the time because, like a board member Duncan stated, Duncan Hines stated, it's been a week. And so we talked about some positions and also some of the job fairs that have already taken place, and then one that's going to be taking place in the near future. So they've already had an auxiliary services fair, which was March 14th, a workforce Wednesday, which was virtual, which was March 20th, and then a PPS instructional fair, which is in person, and that's going to happen on March 26th from 3:00 to 5:30 at Churchland High School. So if anybody is interested, please come out. We would love to have you.
Quick questions. Speaking of HR, have we sent out intents yet? Have we sent out intention letters? What's your intent? Are you, are you retiring? Are you staying? Are you?
Yes.
Okay.
Went out today.
Okay. Thank you.
Nice and early. Thank you. That's March. Yeah, that's great.
Yeah. Got to know. Hopefully you get a clue.
All right. I'll just, we did have our finance committee meeting, and basically it was what we just discussed. There has been no formally approved budget as of yet, but we did have the part B option that was given by the House and the Senate that was presented to the governor, so hopefully that budget can pass. We also had our operations and technology meeting. I do want to point out a few important items there. Many of us had gotten calls from about the time changes at Churchland Elementary School. Ms. Thomas was worrying about that. Dr. Brace, he met with his teacher advisory committee and presented an option of possibly moving them to the middle school tier, which would make them attend earlier and not later as had been projected. Teacher advisory committee had no problem with that, the teacher from that school. He also spoke with the principal, Dr. Jones. She felt like that was okay as well. So they, they made the decision to change them to the middle school tiers that would be going earlier and not later. So.
Okay.
That's great. All right.
You know, it'd be great for some, not great for others, but yes, thank you for bringing it to them.
That'll go out tomorrow.
And so now that we've discussed it, he'll send it out tomorrow so parents have a good advance notice with that.
No, I just, like I said, I appreciate first the follow-up. I know there was a lot of, like, some communication. So I think whatever, even if it couldn't be changed, but thank you for the, you know, compromise, just even bringing in the teacher advisory committee to have their voice and input be heard. I think that's a plus, whether a change could be made or not, but I'm glad that the compromise was founded, that you, Dr. Brace, you just listened to the, at least heard some input. So thank you for that.
And I forgot to mention that. So in five years, when that change happens, then they will go to?
Right.
The later.
Right. Thank you. And thank you, Chair.
No problem. No problem. Also wanted to let you all know that the CT GoTech Labs and the construction of the labs was complete at Waters Middle and Churchland Middle. So all three middle schools have their complete GoTech labs now in the schools. The bathroom projects were now complete at Manor High School, Dr. Cotton and Churchland Middle. They're now complete. He ain't paying no mind. The next bathroom renovation projects would be at Waters Middle and Crowder Middle, so they are completing those. Yep. The Manor High School Little Theater renovation has started, so they're working on that, and the flooring of the stage, the flooring for the stage is near completion now already for that. I see Norcom new bleacher system for the gymnasium is expected to begin the week of April 8th. So now we've already completed Churchland and Manor, so now Norcom will be completed that week. And also, Ms. Duncan Hines, the rezoning study is well underway. They're in the data collection phase now for that. Based on the projected timeline that the company has presented, they shall have a proposal to present to Dr. Brace and his team in the month of July.
Okay.
So that means the rezoning won't take effect for this upcoming school year, but we have to keep in mind that with the rezoning project, part of that is that we're already at capacity at some of our schools.
Absolutely.
So one being Victory. Victory's at capacity, and there are new housing developments coming right behind Victory now across from TCC that will be probably occupied during the summer. So we're put in a tough spot. His team has come up with a great solution. Their solution is to have a temporary modular unit until we get the rezoning study done. Your only other option would be to cap enrollment, and you have to send students to other schools outside of their zone. So I don't think we want to do that, but of course, it's up for discussion now. But the modular unit would be for sixth grade students, and it will only be until we complete the rezoning project and phase.
Well, I don't see a problem with that because that happened years ago, and I do mean years, like when I was in fifth and sixth grade, that's where Brighton was. Brighton was like a little modular unit.
Right.
And I went there for fifth grade, but I didn't go there for sixth grade because they were trying to figure out, you know, what was going on during that, that portion. But that worked, so if, if that's what we need to do.
And I just wanted to stress that this is strictly temporary until we finish the rezoning study, because I know we had modules in our schools for.
Yeah, we got rid of them. Up 10 years. That was one of our things when.
Where we came on board. So unfortunately, I mean, it's a good thing. Population isn't decreasing as they say it is, but we really have to ensure that we have a space prepared for our students and potentially new students as well.
Are we under capacity at any other schools? So when I think about, we are under capacity at Lakeview?
Yeah, Lakeview has space.
Okay.
And it may be other schools as well, but you're at capacity at quite a few as well.
I was just wondering, like, with the rezoning study, it just sounded like, it sounded like we would be shuffling or moving children to another kind of under-capacity school?
That's correct.
Yep.
So we still need to emphasize the need for another school?
Absolutely.
That's the real solution.
Absolutely. Yep.
But I think also too, the thing that we need to talk with the city about is being a part of the planning meetings as we move forward in building, because we do need to know, we need to be in those conversations. A, because I'm not excited about what those houses look like around Victory. I mean, if you've been past Victory Elementary, you've got school, you've got houses that are in front of the school sitting on, and it's just, it's an encroachment, and it just doesn't look pretty. And I understand that we want to throw up houses, and I understand we want to do that, but I think we need to be a part of the planning committee for A, placement, but also B, discussion of where are these kids going to go and what do our schools look like? Because I know in days past, and Mr. Falk, correct me if I'm wrong, but these developers can give kickbacks to the schools to help offset some of the costs of the incoming, incoming.
I don't like the word kickback.
Students. Well, I mean, it's not a kickback, but I mean, it's, you know, like, it's tax credit. So it goes to things like, you know, sorry, I forget, but, but it goes to things like, you know, playgrounds, you know, and to update the cafeteria and for different cafeteria tables and for library because we are putting strains on, you know, where we sit. But I think, I think we need to be a part of that. But I also think, you know, I just, I just hate to bring a mod in. I hate to bring, I mean, we worked hard to get rid of these mods, and we have capped enrollment at Churchland Elementary for a while, and we put kids to Churchland Academy and Churchland, you know, Churchland Primary and Intermediate. So it's not as if we, you know, have never capped and, and moved kids before, you know. I mean, it's unfortunate that you moved to that zone and you don't necessarily get to go to the school of your choice, but we have done that before. And especially if it's temporary, the cost, if I remember correctly, for modules was expensive then. I can only imagine what it is now.
He's actually looking into the cost, but I wanted to bring the option. And another difference with that scenario is that for most of those, like for the Churchland Administration and Churchland Academy, they're moving around the corner.
Victory's, I mean, you know, Lakeview is literally just down Greenwood.
If you're going, if you're going to Lakeview.
Right.
If, then, yeah.
Right. I mean, if you're going to Lakeview, I mean, that's the one that comes in the closest.
I do want to say though, to Board Member Hines' point about the bringing into the conversation with the, any additional developments. I was on the planning commission before school board, and they did have as part of any future plans of school study, but I don't know if they still do that. And Dr. Brace, I'm not sure if they come to the school to ask about capacity anymore.
No, no. When we met with the mayor, that, I brought that point up.
Okay.
That I felt that we should have been involved with planning for everything.
You do.
See, no, everything, because you're, you're affecting schools regardless. So, and in the meeting, he agreed. So I mean, I'm hoping that we did ask for more meetings between the liaison committees to happen and also joint meetings with the board and city council. We're just hoping that can happen so we can be on the same page as far as planning for the city and other schools.
I just see it as kind of being a nice neighbor. You know, if you're going to build a fence, you're going to consult with your neighbor about, you know, the fence and when you're going to put it up and what's going to happen to the old fence and all that good stuff. But I mean, we, we just have to be partners in this because we do have schools that are over capacity. We do have schools that are over 65 years old. We do have limitations to what we can do and what, and, you know, you don't want to say no, but you're, you hate to be in a position where you have no other option, and it just puts a strain on the resources and the capacity that we have, especially in certain areas of the city.
Right.
So we just need to be a part of that conversation.
Absolutely. Totally agree. Yes, ma'am.
Is there a significant difference between module, having to bring in modules versus adding a wing? Because I remember Lakeview added a wing. I just don't like modulars. They harken back to.
As far as cost, there's a very significant difference as far as cost is concerned, but I think he's, Mr. Falk was going to check price as far as possible co-ops and things like that, see what the actual lowest price would be.
In a temporary situation, you'll probably be leasing these as opposed to buying them versus doing bricks and mortar on addition.
Right. And I think the last time we talked about modulators was at Churchland Elementary, and the issue there was running electricity out because Dominion Power was, was six to eight months out to be able to get power run to that modular. So if we're still on, if we're still at that timeline, or if that is still a hindrance, then that is going to help make the decision too as well.
Yeah. And we don't have a timeline or anything.
Right.
Right now, it's just an alternate plan they've come up with.
Gotcha.
That they want to run past the board before they start investigating more, so.
Okay.
But we, worst case, we would have to cap because projections are showing that we're going to need at least three more classrooms at Victory for next school year, and we already gave away one of the Starbase classrooms for this school year. So we wouldn't, if we tried that again, it'll basically eliminate Starbase.
Okay.
So that's why we were looking at this. Otherwise, we will have to, to cap the enrollment.
Okay.
And try to shift the student somewhere else. You mentioned Churchland Elementary earlier. We're getting to a point where we're going to have to go back to that again for, for this year.
Right.
And look at Churchland Academy possibly again like we did. But whatever we do, we're looking at potentially one year.
Okay.
Because the rezoning study would be done. And, you know, of course, we got to have all the public meetings and all of that. So we're looking one year, and then everybody will have their new attendance lines in terms of which school they will attend.
Okay.
All right. And the last thing I wanted to mention from the committee report was the 2024 summer painting projects. You know, those alternate. This year is going to be Simonsdale, Clark, RC, Churchland Primary, and intermediate, Churchland Academy, and pre-K. Olive Branch pre-K will be the summer painting projects for this year for that. All right.
Technology.
Oh, from technology, the main thing was Dean wanted to mention that we did complete the upgrade to Wi-Fi 6 for all the schools. So that's going to be a big difference for Wi-Fi users for all of our schools and also for enhanced security. They did install, what's the name of that thing? Not security, data recovery. They did complete the installation of Rubrik, which is the next generation data recovery system, so that's already been installed as well.
I'm sorry. Dean, cell phones. Simonsdale Elementary used to be a dead zone. Is it still a dead zone with the new Wi-Fi?
Simonsdale, Churchland High, Churchland in general.
Is it a, is it a Portsmouth Public School issue or is it a service issue?
It's a service issue.
It's a service issue.
Okay. Okay. I mean, it's a safety issue. I mean, when you look at the size of some of these schools and you go into lockdown and I can't get out of my classroom to know what's going on, to get any feedback, because you do go radio silent if you do get into that position. I just want, I just, I wish there was a way. Are teachers allowed to take their devices and log them into our Wi-Fi? Or is that a rogue device?
So with Wi-Fi 6, we're going to have the ability and the capacities to be able to do that.
Okay.
So I'm not ready to announce exactly when yet, but it will be soon.
Okay. Because then, you know, at one place I worked, we had different tiers of Wi-Fi, and so I don't, I'm not a tech guru. Just tell me my phone's going to work when I need it to work. You know what I'm saying? So, okay. And thank you, Dean. Appreciate it. And electronic signs at Simonsdale. Are we closer to getting an electronic sign fixed, upgraded? Okay.
Yeah, I'm working with Daktronics.
Okay.
We're working to get that.
Okay. Because it's rainy season, so one side never works. Okay. Gotcha. Thank you.
I did ask about that at our last, meeting before last, I think. And also, I am going to task the policy committee to start looking at a cell phone usage policy for Portsmouth Public Schools. It's been quite the issue within our classes. Hinder, hinder instruction causes some challenges for teachers as well, but we also want to ensure that parents are able to contact their children and vice versa when needed. So Virginia Beach, they do have a policy that's implemented that works fairly well, and I've gone through that policy, and Dr. White has as well. So I'm going to ask if he would work with our policy committee to try to bring us some suggestions back on a cell phone usage policy for students during instruction time.
Can I piggyback off that, and then I'll give it to Ms. Thomas?
Oh, yeah. I'm sorry, y'all.
Once that is, once that's drafted, can CNI committee have it?
You have it.
Can we, can we look at it before we bring it to the board?
Oh, yeah. Now, I'm sure he gonna let them see it before we let us see it too.
Okay. Well, you know. I would just like to have the curriculum and instruction conversation about it to make sure that, you know, we've covered and we've addressed the issues that are going to need to be addressed.
Sounds great.
Okay. Thank you.
Everybody can have their way with it before they bring it back.
I'm not the chairman. I'm sorry.
Here, actually, it's okay. I was going to ask a question about the cell phone coverage at Churchland High School and whether it was a school insurance issue, but thank you.
Okay. Sounds great. Yes, ma'am.
Was there an update on the rental facility policy?
Yeah.
Policy committee.
Ms. Futrell has it now.
Okay.
So I'm waiting for her to give it back to me.
Okay.
And we're meeting on next Thursday, so Ms. Boone is jumping on board with us now, so she'll look at it as well. Do you need to see it?
I can wait till it's presented to the board.
Yeah. All right. Sounds good. All right. No other committee reports. Madam Vice Chair, take us in the closed meeting.
I move that the board enters through a closed meeting under the provisions of Section 2.2-3711 of the Code of Conduct on all purpose, consultation with legal counsel concerning a legal matter required nearby, have a special counsel as permitted under subsection 8.8.
All right. Motion's been made. You have a second?
Second.
Second, Ms. Boone. Any discussion? Seeing none, roll call vote, Madam Clerk.
Ms. Atkinson?
Yes.
Mrs. Boone?
Yes.
Dr. Cotton?
Yes.
Mrs. Hines?
Yes.
Mrs. Schumay?
Yes.
Mrs. Thomas?
Yes.
Dr. Whitaker?
Yes.
Dr. Patello?
Thank you so much.
It's unanimous.
And if it's okay with Dr. Brace, the rest of the staff can leave besides, so, you know, I, that's okay.
Yeah.
Beautiful. Beautiful.
Yes.
Motion made by Vice Chair, second by Ms. Boone.
Yes.
And we are unanimous?
Yes.
Yes.
Right. Thank you all so much. Meeting is now adjourned.